Okay, go ahead and talk into the microphone.
Okay, I'm talking into the microphone.
We can hear you.
Is it, can you hear him at a good level?
I don't have as good of a reference for this. I'd have to play something from the other computer. But it sounds okay right now. I think it might still be a bit on the quiet side though.
Say that again.
I think it might still be a little bit on the quiet side. I have my volume level up pretty high.
Okay, so she's a little bit loud in the room. So that's the Zoom CPU channel. So I'm gonna bring that down a little bit. Michelle, can you talk again?
Yeah, right now I am working on our inventory system and it is very exciting.
Okay, so Andrew, could I get you to give a, you know, to continuously talk so that I can adjust it so she can hear, listen for differences?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Yep, that's good.
Alright, I think we're good. We're gonna go radio silent until 10 o'clock.
Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting on Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's Wednesday, April 13th, and we will begin with our public statement read by Commissioner Gibson.
Good morning. Please, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you so much. Next, we move on to department updates. Good morning, Ms. Cottle.
Good morning. How are you?
You're great. Thank you.
That is great. I did want to share something, and is that, can you see that flyer?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So I just have a little bit to share with you today. Monroe County and all of Indiana does remain in a low community level at this time. There are some areas certainly of the U.S. where rates are rising and are in medium or even high levels. So we continue to watch what's going on. We want to look at our local cases, our hospitalizations, deaths, even looking at that water data to guide our local information about what's happening. So those pieces of information will kind of alert us if we see that things might be increasing. But currently, we're holding steady and just want people to remain careful and aware. We are preparing to do our after-action report related to the community's pandemic response. And then on the other note, and this is why I wanted to share my screen today, our community health assessment was completed. The report is being proofed right now, and it will be released shortly. The report is being proofed right now, and it will be released shortly. The next step is the development of a community health improvement plan. And that will join our community members in efforts to build the health of our community based on what they see as priorities. So to do that, we are hosting these two events. We call them think tanks. We've done that now with the last few assessments that we've done. These are opportunities for community members to come to the table. Now that they've hopefully participated in that survey and in the community health assessment, they can come to the table to review, get an idea of from that assessment what the priorities were that people indicated they were concerned about. And they can help us identify and narrow a few targeted priorities that we can work on in the next few years as a community. So then we'll develop teams to actually work on those. So it won't, this is not the health department's plan or the hospital's plan. This is a community plan, and it will involve our community partners, and we hope lots of community members. So please mark your calendar, April 27th from 4:00 to 6:00 at Switchyard Park Pavilion, or April 30th from 1:15 to 3:15 at the Banneker Community Center. We do encourage everybody to register so that we can plan for setup and accommodations. There is also some help available for people who might not be able to come if they didn't have transportation or childcare needs taken care of. So if you register, then we can, and you indicate that you have needs around those two issues, then we can certainly be aware of that and, and offer some services to you. So please join us in that, share the information. Come and share your thoughts around the public health needs assessment that's been done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Cottle. We really appreciate you, and see if there are any comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens.
This community health initiative is what's been funded by the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. Is that correct?
No, actually, it is separate, although the Community Voices for Health group is working with us as a partner on it. And the data from their work is part, has been added to our assessment. So just goes to show that that funding and that initiative, coupled with even what the hospital IU Health has done, and then some additional surveys that we've done, is a very robust assessment that really includes all of that information. Truly a, a community bringing together all the community resources and activity around what our needs are.
Excellent, thank you. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Right, thank you, thank you so much, Ms. Cottle. I do have a general question for you about how we're reporting COVID cases right now. And it's basically, we're, is it true that we're just looking at hospitalization numbers and using that as our metric, as our core metric?
Well, that is certainly the big driver, and then cases per hundred thousand in terms of what's reported. So the percent positivity isn't as valuable as a metric now as it was earlier on. And as more people are doing testing that maybe at home, so it's not all reported. We are still looking at the number of reported cases, so positive cases, PCR cases, positive and negative are still reportable, and we are still looking at that along with what's happening at the hospitals. So those community levels and are kind of based on those things kind of coupled together. And we are really, in terms of the reporting, moving to more of an influenza-type model.
Okay, great, thank you so much. We appreciate all the information. Thank you for that. And let's see if there are any other departments that have an update for us. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come up to the podium in that U-Hill. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is public comment. This is for public comment, an opportunity for public comment for items that are not on our agenda. And we ask that folks on Zoom raise their hand, or in, those who are in the Nat U-Hill room to come to the podium. You will have a total of three minutes to speak. At 2:30, you will hear a tone. And when you hear that tone, that means you have 30 seconds to wrap up your comment. The same will be true for public comment on our agenda items. And it looks like we do have a commenter, Ron Thompson. If you could verify your name and let us know if you're a Monroe County resident, please.
I'm sorry, I was muted. I am Ron Thompson, and I am a Monroe County resident.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. First of all, I noticed that you can't do chats because the host has blocked us. My comment initially is that the Commissioner's audio is very low, and I have to go to closed caption to understand what it is that you're saying. Ms. Cottle's comments were loud and clear. Having said that, I want to talk this morning about Smart 911. And I would assume that you as Commissioners know what Smart 911 is, but most people I encounter throughout the community do not. I learned about Smart 911 by listening in on a children's presentation by a Bloomington fire, fireman. And it's a service that the county pays for where citizens can enroll, and it gives central dispatch information that is helpful when they would have to respond to an emergency at your location. That includes health conditions, age, and number of occupants in your home, location of bedrooms, and the ages of the occupants of those, types of heating and hot water, and turnoff for water and gas locations, to include, you know, electrical power, power box. And, you know, I could go on and on, but you get the idea. It's information that emergency service personnel could use. That's the good news. The bad news is, it's hard to find any information on it. I couldn't find it on your website. I couldn't find it on the Bloomington Police Department or the Bloomington Fire Department's website. And I would encourage your listening audience to spread the word about this service. You can just Google Smart 911, and it'll come up, and it'll show you how to enroll. There's also a trifold that can be given out, and I would suggest you get ahold of some of those and put them in county buildings for the public to peruse and also to enroll. And, but I just ask you to spread the rules. Everybody I've talked to think it's a great idea. Most of them have enrolled. I've enrolled, I've enrolled my neighbor. And that's all I have this morning, thank you.
Thank you so much, we appreciate that. All right, let's see if there's anyone else to offer public comment for items not on our agenda. All right, seeing none, we'll move on with our agenda. Item five, please.
Move approval of the minutes from the Commissioners' Meeting of April 6, 2022.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments, corrections, edits? There was one, Scribner's error, that Ms. Freeman has already corrected. Excellent. Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes for April 6, 2022 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please. Move approval of the claims docket accounts payable April 13th, 2022. Second. We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Mr. Miller joining us via Zoom. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The total for claims was $4,413,680. $3,604,857.34 was for the local income tax distribution for April. Of that total, $752,140.15 was for the public safety answering point, local income tax specifically. $139,541.50 was for Stone Belt Arc, Inc., for the second quarter allocation per council. And finally, $124,345 was for Strasser Construction Company, Inc. $49,580 was for the remodel project of the Napa Building, and $74,765 of that total was for the construction on the Bryant Facility.
Thank you so much, Mr. Miller. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens? No. There was a lot to get through, though. Forty pages, I think it was.
Yes, forty pages.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Okay, any public comment on this item? Either come to the podium in the Nat U-Hill room, or raise your hand on the Zoom screen, please. Okay, seeing none, we'll come back to the board for a vote. All those in favor of approving the claims docket accounts payable April 13th, 2022 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have any reports today, and so we will move on to new business. Item A, please.
Move approval of three separate items. 2023 application for section 5311/5339 Assistance for Rural Areas Grant. Approval of Resolution 2022-14, and approval of a matching dollars of $66,000 subject to council approval during their 2023 budget hearings. Fund name, county general. Fund number, 1,000-0068, in a total amount of $66,000.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Shall we start with Ms. Purdy?
Yes, good morning. This is an ongoing grant that Monroe County has been a participant of with Area 10 Rural Transit. I don't remember the number of years, but it's been quite a length of time. And so Ms. Myers is here from Area 10 Rural Transit to kind of give more explanation as to what this grant is actually going to provide. And I believe that you guys, we just get notice that you're going to be able to get some vehicles.
Yes, yeah, so, yeah, right, right before the meeting. So we've been, you know, we've been providing the public transportation through Rural Transit, the FTA 5311 program operation funds for like 35 years. We cover Monroe, Owen, Putnam, and Lawrence Counties, and this is for anybody to ride. So it's not just for the older population or the disabled population, though. That is a misconception because our organization focuses on that. But it is a public transportation program. This is the operating grant that's due for 2023, so January through December. The allocation for the FTA allocation is $891,641. The total budget would be $1,830,587, of which $70,000 is expected for fares. So that's what we're asking for in renewal for our application. Part of that is local match. We have local match from the Monroe County Commissioners. We also have it from the, you know, Lawrence County Commissioners, Putnam County Commissioners, and the Town of Spencer, and then other local support that we have for that. In addition, we were, you know, we have for the past two years been unable to get capital replacement vehicles, and we have needed and budgeted for 12 of our 29, which is quite a bit. I mean, we, those vehicles are the 2009. Eight of them are not functioning at all anymore. We can't even drive them, they're parked. And yet we're stuck not replacing them because Indott is not letting us purchase those through their Midwest Transit QPA provider. As you know, there's a, you know, problem with supply, and it is ongoing. But as of a week ago, they did say that we are able to at least apply for the low-floor minivans. That'll help a little bit, not a whole lot. The buses that we need to replace are the 16-capacity plus-two wheelchair. So we are asking for three of those. We're not asking for any local match from the Commissioners on that. We have that secured, carried over from 2020, actually, for this purpose. So that is what we're asking for. I did want to just give an update that we are short drivers in Monroe County, three full-time and two part-time. So that's not insignificant for us either. We're still meeting demand, for the most part, because demand is still returning from the pandemic period, which is good considering our bus and our driver situation. But hopefully, everything will be back soon. So any questions that you have for me, Rural Transit or otherwise? Thank you so much, Ms. Myers. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, where could people apply if they want to be a driver?
They can go to our website, or we have a posting on Indeed. They can call, they walk in the door, we have a sign out front.
They can take the bus there, right?
I bake goods and bring them in for people, you know, staff.
Nice.
I do what I can, right?
Yeah.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't, right? Yeah.
Yeah, we, we appreciate the service for our residents, and I think that's one of the biggest myths, that it's, it's only, it's a bus system reserved for elderly folks, and it's, that's not true. And, and so it's good to spell that. Yep, it's a constant theme, we need to keep reminding people. Yes. Excellent, great. Thank you so much. We appreciate the way this has been put together. And Ms. Purdy, thank you for your help on organizing this important bit of legislation. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Anyone in the Nat U-Hill room, please come up to the podium or raise your hand on the Zoom screen. And seeing none, we'll come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving the Rural Transit items, including Resolution 2022-14, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, it's great to see you. All right, next item, please.
Move approval of National Center Media Agreement for YSB. Fund name, Runaway and Homeless. Fund number, 8120, in an amount of $5,000.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and we have Ms. Nasby here joining us.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. It's good to be here in person. It's been quite a while. So I am Bridgette Nasby from Services Bureau. This is again, one of our longstanding contracts that we have as part of our multifaceted outreach strategy to educate youth and families about the Safe Place Program. So people in the public aren't familiar, Safe Place is that program where kids can access help if they're ever in a crisis, and all of the program is free. So this particular contract focuses on in-theater advertising, but we have over the last few years added a digital component, especially during the pandemic, to educate kids. So commercials go out on streaming services and several channels that target youth specifically and families. But we also still can keep that in-theater advertising. So people are going to the movies, they're going to see that ad before PG movies and higher, and they're going to see that ad in the lobby every, I think it's running every 12 minutes. So that's been a pretty standard part of our outreach for quite some time. So you'll see in this campaign that it's going to run a little bit different because it's running May 23rd to December 31st, which is pretty cool for me. They're going to do eight weeks of in-theater advertising. We're only doing one theater this year just because of staffing issues on the east side. But the digital impressions, which we're really excited about, reach over 85,000 people over that, that period of time. So this is usually pretty effective, and we can gather all that data and report it in all of our reports that we have to do for everything else. So the return is pretty good on this contract as well.
Right, thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, I think I just heard you say that this, it runs with PG and up movies? Because that wasn't clear in the information that we were provided, so thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't at this time, thank you.
This is a great campaign, and it's, it's done, it's done some wonders in terms of getting the word out. So appreciate that we've continued to pursue it. I think it's a good, a good avenue.
Thank you, yeah, we're really excited. This is a newer part over the last 10 years that we've gotten to add. And the digital part is really cool. Part of it is kind of strange, thinking about how much we have access to your phones, but at the same time, getting that information out is cool, too.
Excellent, thank you so much. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Either come to the podium in the Nat U-Hill room, or raise your hand on the Zoom screen. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Either come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room or raise your hand on the Zoom screen. And seeing none, we'll come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving the agreement with National Senate Media for YSB signify by saying aye. 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 Motion carries three zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next item, please.
Move approval of the memorandum, memorandum of understanding with Indiana University Trustees to create High Tech Crimes Unit Fund. Fund name, High Tech Crimes Unit, fund number ninety-one fifty-nine, in the amount of two hundred fifty-three thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventeen cents.
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have our prosecutor, Ms. Oliphant, joining us via Zoom. Tell us all about it, please.
All right, good morning. So Erica Oliphant, prosecuting attorney. And you may recall that back in November, I asked the Commissioners to sign a memorandum of agreement with the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council to accept grant funds to establish a regional high-tech crime unit in Monroe County in partnership with Indiana University. And so this memorandum of agreement is to formalize the partnership with Indiana University. The MOU that I've brought to you today, it, it was reviewed by David Schilling. Essentially, how our partnership will work is that the Director of the High Tech Crime Unit will be an Indiana University employee. IU has already created the job description, and we have interviewed and selected a candidate for the director position. We do need this MOU in place to formally offer the position and, and get up and running. Any assets that are purchased with grant funds, such as a forensic computer and other digital forensic software and licenses, will be tagged or inventoried as county property. But during the terms of this MOU, those, those items will be for the use of the unit to further our work processing digital evidence for ten counties in our region. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but this is really just a continuation of the work that I brought to you back in November of twenty-one.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Well, given the few things that have happened recently, I'm happy that this is in place.
Absolutely. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I was wondering if things like scams actually qualify as high-tech crime?
Sure, so high-tech crime is not necessarily a specific type of crime. It actually has more to do with what type of evidence is available. So a high-tech crime is anything that has used a computer network, cell phones, and other forms of digital evidence. And so certain scams certainly would fall into that category, but it could also include things such as homicides that use some digital, that have digital evidence as a component.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. If there's anyone in the Nat U Hill Room to come to the podium or via Zoom, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll come back to the board for a vote. All those in favor of approving the memorandum of understanding with Indiana University Trustees for the High Tech Crimes Unit Fund signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good day.
All right, next item, please.
Move approval of BTEC Fire and Security Proposal for Camera System at Curry Building. Fund name cumulative capital, fund number eleven thirty-eight, in the amount of twenty-three thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Mr. Crone here, our facilities manager, to tell us all about it.
Good morning, everyone. Over about the past two years, as camera systems in the various county buildings has become obsolete or started to fail, Technical Services Department had worked to get all our security cameras on one standardized system with one software backend. The Curry Building located at two fourteen West Seventh is the last building we have still on a non-standardized camera system. System is obsolete and beyond service life and needs repaired. So this proposal from BTEC Services would be to replace all the cameras in the existing locations, adding new cameras in some new locations and replacing the DVR system as well as the backend software for that.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
I'm glad we're moving forward with this.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Yeah, I was going to ask if there were any buildings left that didn't have this updated system. You've already answered that, thank you. Let's see if we have any public comment on this item, either here in the Nat U Hill Room, come up to the podium, or via Zoom, please raise your hand. All right, seeing none, we'll come back to the board for a vote. All those in favor of approving the BTEC Fire and Security Proposal for Camera System at Curry Building signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Move approval of BTEC Fire and Security Proposal for Access Control System at the Curry Building. Fund name cumulative capital, fund number eleven thirty-eight, in an amount of ten thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars and thirty-one cents.
Second. We have a motion and a second, Mr. Crone, please tell us all about this.
Okay, again, this kind of mirrors the security camera from the last item. The Curry Building is the last building we have that's not on our standardized swipe lock system. So this is a proposal from BTEC to incorporate the existing swipe locks that are there onto that system, as well as adding five additional swipe locks throughout the building.
Excellent, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Sounds like we're improving the security.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't, thank you.
Thank you so much for working on this and pulling this together. We appreciate it. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item, either here in the Nat U Hill Room or via Zoom, raise your hand, please. All right, seeing none, we'll come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving the BTEC Fire Security Proposal for Access Control System at Curry signify by saying aye. 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 Motion carries three zero. Thank you again.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move approval of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten, add chapter two fifty-six regarding authorized personnel-only areas.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Mr. Cockrell here to tell us all about it.
Yes, I think this is fairly straightforward. Traditionally, and since I've been here, we've always allowed departments to choose which part of their work area is public. It was open to the public and which is staff-only areas. This kind of codifies that concept and provides a so, a penalty if there's a violation of that. So this is just kind of putting that longstanding tradition into our code. It also allows our fleet and facilities manager to do, to make these decisions for areas that aren't really, or only one department. And I think we're thinking of maybe break areas or things like that, where, you know, more than one department has access and therefore wouldn't be allocated to just solely one department.
Excellent, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens? No. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't, thank you.
All right, I don't either. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. And seeing none, we will come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero. And next item, please.
Move approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirteen, Clerk Service Agreements. Fund name elections, fund number twelve fifteen, in a total amount of fourteen thousand four hundred twenty dollars. And that's broken down to Heart Inter-Civic Election Day Support for primary voting on May third in the amount of four thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. Heart Inter-Civic Election Day Support for November eighth, twenty twenty-two, the same amount of four thousand six hundred and sixty dollars, and Heart Inter-Civic Election Training for three days for five thousand one hundred dollars.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Ms. Martin joining us via Zoom. Good morning.
Good morning, ladies. First, I want to say I need workers for Election Day. And I'm going to give you some numbers. If you are working as a Democrat, you would call O'Ryan Sack. His number is eight one two three two zero zero three eight nine. If you're working as a Republican, call Pamela Samples. Her number is eight one two three two two nine one one four. So that's my public service announcement. So we're going back to the contracts with Heart. Election Day Support is exactly what it says it is. They fly in for the day to help us if we have any problems during the primary and the general. The third is for training. We had a person step down that was a vital person to us in our election job performance. So we had to get Heart to come in to train the replacement. So that's it. That's what I have, the three.
Excellent, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens? I'm very proud of the fact that we make sure that elections occur and that they're safe and secure. Excellent. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I just want to mention that I got my postcard.
Oh, good, good, good.
Couple days ago, and it was, I think it's very effective.
Thank you, thank you.
Excellent, thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item, either in the Nat U Hill Room, please come to the podium, or if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand on the Zoom screen. And seeing none, we will come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirteen signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero. Thank you again, Ms. Martin. And if you could type those numbers into the chat, folks may be able to see it as well.
I will do that, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. All right, next item, please.
Move approval of the License Agreement with Indiana Railroad Company.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Ms. Ridge here to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Good morning. So we have, we received, it's called one-thirty funding, actually, through NDOT for our Cars Trail at the Losch Road Crossing, and it will have a private at-grade crossing. So this is the actual, the license to work with the railroad to be able to have this, to have access to our walking trail. It's funded ninety, ninety percent, ten percent local match, so the funding from NDOT for this is three hundred and fifty thousand.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Could you let the public know how long you have worked to make this happen? It's been years, right?
Well, the Cars Trail, I believe, phase one probably started back in two thousand fourteen, I'd say. And then, so we've had to piece it together just to phase it due to funding. And then, of course, the Parks Department applied for the next level grant and was one of the first recipients of that award to finish this project. So, yeah, it's, it's coming together. So we're finally putting the final pieces together. And I think the railroad crossing will be the last piece to connect it to Elletsville.
You were also putting into place several things that make the public safer, right, in terms of?
Absolutely, and I, it's been great working with the railroad on this and NDOT. I, I wasn't even aware of one-thirty funding. But then I learned a little bit more about it, and, and it is all built for safety at railroad crossings, so.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't, thank you.
Thanks for working on this.
Absolutely, it's been a great team effort with the, the Trails Group and Parks Department, so, and the legal department, of course.
Excellent work. This is, this is a nice piece to add. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Either come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room or raise your hand on the Zoom screen. And seeing none, we'll come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving the License Agreement with the Indiana Railroad Company signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of Beam Longest Enneff Construction Services for Vernal Pike Connector Road. Fund name Vernal Pike Connector Road, fund number eighty-one sixty-five, in an amount of one million fifteen thousand and seven hundred dollars.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Ridge, please tell us all about it.
So this will be for construction inspection services for overseeing the construction of this new extension of Sunrise Greetings Court. It will go from Sunrise Greetings Courts connects with Vernal Pike. We will extend that road south to connect with Profile Parkway and Gates Drive, which opened this year. It goes to Letting. Right now, as of eleven sixteen twenty twenty-two, that might go a little bit later, depending on how right-of-way acquisition proceeds. And we have, I believe, seven million eighty-eight thousand dollars for construction from NDOT for this project.
Right, excellent, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Is this another eighty-twenty sort of match, or approximately?
It is not an eighty-twenty at this point. Design and right-of-way has been at local cost, and that's on our west-side TIP. The cost of the project, of course, has increased as we move forward due to the construction of a bridge on this project. So it's not, it's not quite eighty-twenty. I would say it's more of a, maybe a sixty-forty, sixty-five, thirty-five. However, as you get closer to construction and it goes to Letting and we see where the numbers are, we can reach out to NDOT, and if maybe another LPA has not been able to get a project to construction, funds can sometimes become available to put to projects that are ready to go. So we will always reach out and ask if there's more money.
Excellent. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, does this road have a name yet? Or is it just going to be Vernal Pike Connector?
Well, we named it Vernal Pike Connector because we weren't sure of the route at the time we were going to take because we used to have an at-grade crossing behind Coles, and then Coles was built there. And we were going to do it as, it was actually Industrial Park Drive Connector, so we changed it to this. I'm not sure if it'll stay as Sunrise Greetings Court and go all the way through there, but it won't, it won't stay as Vernal Pike Connector.
Thank you. Excellent, let's limit the confusion. Excellent, thank you so much. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item, either here in the Nat U Hill Room or via Zoom. Looks like we have Mr. Shelton joining us from the chamber. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Shelton, on behalf of the chamber, but also as a member of the Monroe County Redevelopment Commission, we urge you to approve this. We are very excited about this. We've been working on this for a number of years, as Ms. Ridge sort of alluded to earlier. It will greatly improve traffic flow out there in that area where traffic is very dense now. It will allow people to get into the shopping center area or using Profile Parkway to, to get to what Cook is doing at the old GE site. It'll help access to Ivy Tech. And will just greatly increase flow out there without people having to get on either State Road forty-eight or Curry Pike. So we encourage you to approve this. We certainly want to salute and thank Ms. Ridge for her work with NDOT to secure the funding that she mentioned, and have no doubt that if it is possible to secure more, she'll be the person to do it. So please approve this. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Shelton. Let's see if there's any other public comments. And he is right to thank Ms. Ridge for her hard work on this. All right, with that, we will come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving the agreement with Beam Longest Enneff Construction Services for Vernal Pike Connector Road signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero. We don't have any appointments today. And I would remind folks that, yes, election workers are needed. Please contact the Clerk's Office if you're available to serve on Election Day. We do have some openings on boards and commissions, including the Board of Zoning Appeals, so please get your application in by going to co.monroe.in.us and looking for, doing a search for Board and Commissions' application. As Ms. Cottle mentioned, there is an opportunity for area residents to provide input to improve the health and well-being of the community. And you can offer your input on our community's health by attending one of the two think tanks. The first is at Switchyard Park Pavilion, April twenty-seventh. The first is at Switchyard Park Pavilion, April 27th, four to six. And the other is at the Banneker Community Center from 1:15 to 3:15 on April 30th. So please join us. Our emergency management department has provided a list of blood drives through the fall. And the May blood drives are April 4th, which is a Wednesday from 10 to 3. Give me May. I'm sorry, May 4th and May 5th, which is Thursday, which is a Thursday from 1 to 6. And this is at Ivy Tech. So many thanks to Ivy Tech for their assistance. We also want to remind our community members that we have a resident alert system available to keep you apprised of any dangerous storms or weather events. And you can sign up for free at co.monroe.in.us. Just click on the megaphone and follow the steps to sign up. Any other announcements, Commissioner Gibbons? Commissioner Jones? Okay. So we do have a work session agenda today. Can we come back at 11:00 AM for that? Is that okay? Great. All right, so we will come back at 11:00 AM for a work session. And in the meantime, our regular session is adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Thank you, TSV, for all your hard work.
Thank you so much. Thanks for hanging, hanging around and waiting for us. Appreciate it. We have our new director, Ms. Nestor Jellen, joining us. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Thanks for having me. So I want to go through a quick PowerPoint for this work session since this is a larger text amendment and I want to give a little bit of background and research before I go into the text amendment itself. So this is a text amendment to chapter 815, which is regarding our site plan review. And this would amend the standards for submitting a certified site plan, a certified plot plan, and a scaled plot plan drawing. So I just want to go over what the biggest impact will be of this text amendment for those listening and for the commissioners. So the biggest impact will be felt, we feel, by people that are building brand-new single-family and two-family residential units that are not on an existing foundation or it's on a vacant lot. They will now be asked to submit what's called a certified plot plan. The items that will be staying the same, that are just sort of being reorganized or able to be better clarified under this text amendment, is that commercial construction will still require a certified site plan and residential additions, remodels, accessory structures such as pools, detached sheds, garages, those will still be able to submit a scaled plot plan drawing. So that's like a hand drawing that's not necessarily certified by a surveyor or engineer. So we've worked to get the word out. This text amendment has gone through the plan commission and received a favorable, favorable vote. And so we just want to let you know that we are trying to tell other people because, as you know, surveyors and engineers, they, they have a little bit of lead time before they can get plans up and running for people that are wanting to get a certified plot plan if that becomes a requirement. So we've put together a press release, which can be found on the county website. We've also posted on our new OpenGov site so that if anyone is applying for new residential construction, they check a box, a help text shows up to say that, you know, we may be requiring a certified plot plan beginning at the end of April, should the text amendment go through. And we've also done some background of what we have currently to understand, is this going to be a zero to 100 change for people? Or what is the impact going to be of some sort of text amendment like this? So we did a review of our software, all of the building permits that have been submitted for Monroe County. So this text amendment will be for Monroe County, excluding Town of Ellisville and City of Bloomington. And we looked at permits submitted between February 24th of 2021 and September 16th of 2021, and that was 95 residential permits total. So what we received in coming in is that 53%, almost 54% submitted certified plans already to construct a new residential unit. Of, then there were some that submitted a scaled drawing and 6.3% were asked to go ahead and submit a certified plan and a scaled drawing was inadequate. And then 40% were able to proceed with just a scaled drawing. So we have about 40% typically that would be asked now to submit a certified plot plan if this were to go through as just a, a sample of what we have happening at the county today. So we have also done a lot of research before this text amendment went through. We reached out to several design professional groups in the county. I have data at the end, if anyone is interested, from three of those design professional groups about timeline and costs. And then we've also received feedback from four surveyors and a building association representative on the actual text amendment. And we've heard from and listened to people that have called in and asked questions, other departments. So we have a, a lot of feedback that we've gotten to date and I will say that if this does proceed, we will be still listening to people and trying to make amendments as we see fit or as are needed. And so this isn't a one-size-fits-all or a one-and-done text amendment. We do intend and we will try to work with people on making this helpful for the public, the environment, the community. So I want to go over some of the benefits of this text amendment because a lot of people will see this as a cost to property owners. So I want to talk about what happens here in the office about some of the people that go through with a scaled drawing and what things we could prevent maybe by having a certified plot plan for people. So if you have a certified plot plan, you can have an understanding of your property lines and prevent building over lot lines. A quick review, just of our one type of administrative subdivisions that shift lot lines, we saw that four were derived from people that were built off of their own lot in the last four years. So we do see it in, you know, some commonalities across the county of people having this concern and fences, especially I think maybe don't get picked up by our office but are often over property lines. It can also illustrate areas of concern for people. It can protect home buyers by knowing the residential home location before they build a brand-new residential structure. It can assure county ordinances are being met. And then it's just helpful documentation for current and future property owners to know where is the buildable area on this lot? Should I want to do an addition or should I want to add structures and just making sure that the home was built in the best location possible? And we hope that it's saving money for people in the long run and protecting both the environment and the public. So the recommendation that we received is favorable. We received a favorable recommendation on February 15th by the plan commission of a vote of seven to one. And we are hopeful that we can schedule a formal hearing on this for April 27th. And I just want to let you know about the 90-day mark, which is a state statute that from the time that it received a recommendation by the plan commission to when the county commissioners need to vote on it, that would be May 16th. And so we are also in, in a support of a favorable vote on this. So now that I've gone through some of that, let me go ahead and go through what this text amendment actually says. So this is a change to chapter 815. As I mentioned, it, it is a relatively big change for us and we're hoping that it's a little bit more user-friendly the way that we have this laid out. So I'll go ahead and explain how we've done this so far. So we've split this into three categories: commercial structures, residential structures, and residential accessory structures. And we have below that the applicability and requirements for each of those different types. So it also includes a relationship to other parts of the ordinance as to what the use is for the property, as to whether it could be considered, let's say, commercial or residential, or even residential or residential accessory. And so those are listed below as well. Then you come to a table that identifies the standards that you have to have included in your drawing. So whether it's certified site plan, certified plot plan, which is a little bit lower bar than a certified site plan. Some of the things that may be different are you're, you're probably not going to show the whole proposed grading on the site. You're probably not going to have any required landscaping, required outdoor lighting, things like that will be different between the commercial and residential plot plan. And then you also have the accessory requirements. So underneath, these are where the requirements begin and it's listed out. So for instance, the accessory structures have a, a plot plan to scale. So a homeowner or somebody qualified could draw their own plan for a new residential accessory structure. As with the commercial and residential, you will have to go through a professional and have those plans certified. And then below that, it will have different standards that need to be included in that drawing so that somebody that is able to be contracted to do the work or a homeowner that's doing their own drawing can use this as a checklist to make sure that they have the components that we're going to be looking for to make sure that the, once submitted to the building department, there's no time lapse of that review because they're missing items under chapter 815. So most of the text in black are actually, those are standards that have already been existing for all types of construction. So the, the items in blue are what is changing. And I would say that we work very closely with the stormwater team as well to make sure that any new requirements or things that are best practices to make sure that people aren't having drainage concerns, which is one of the biggest issues that we see out in the county as far as complaints go. But we're trying to make sure that there's good drainage to residential homes that are being built brand-new. And the way to do that is to make sure that you have positive drainage away from the structures. And then we're also updating this since it hasn't been updated in quite some time to make sure that we're following all buildable area requirements since those texts have gone in since this original adoption. And I think that's mostly it. If, if you have any questions or want me to go over anything else, I'd be happy to do so.
All right. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
That's a lot to absorb.
But I'll get through it before next week. Or two weeks, I guess, they're looking for. Commissioner Jones?
Not at this time.
Yeah, I really am glad that this is coming forward now and we've been working on it for quite some time and plan commission meetings and, and committee meetings. And really, this is about protecting the homeowners who are already there and businesses that already exist to make sure that somebody else isn't going to build something that's going to cause problems and an expense for them that we're anticipating. So it really is a, a way to support, support our current, our current residents and business owners. So appreciate the hard work on this and it's great. I really appreciate the explanation with the benefits listed and all of that. I think that's a smart way to do it. So very good. And so we will see this, what, two weeks, you said? Yes. Excellent. Very good. Anything else? Okay. We're great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other business for our work session? Mr. Schilling?
Thank you very much, Dave Schilling from the legal department. I just got off the phone with Nick Lawton, the attorney that represented the county in the Houston South case. And he's been looking into ways that the county might recover some of its funds. And there's a Equal Access to Justice Act that allows the recovery of fees, but it only applies to units of government with a net worth of less than $7 million. We don't qualify for that. But there is a, what's called a bill of cost that he can file to recover the $400 filing fee that we paid. And that is, that bill of cost filing is due today. So I just thought I'd run an appearance if you would authorize that.
Okay. Any, any questions or anything on that? Makes sense to me. So we just need to make a motion and vote on an approval to file this paperwork for recovery?
Yes.
I will make that motion. And wait for a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any public comments on this item? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Glad it worked out. Good timing. All those in favor of approving the motion to recover the filing fee, signify by saying aye? signify by saying aye. If I'm aye, motion carries three zero.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. All right. Anything else? All right. With that, we are adjourned. Everyone, stay safe today during the storms. Thanks.